I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Sagatuck for November 27th. If you could all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to make a pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to be a republic, to be a free and fair and honest nation under God, and to do as it's all liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we call the roll call for today, I do need to make note that Holly Anderson is joining by Zoom today. And she did submit a letter that she would like to request a special accommodation to attend and participate as a voting council member in this evening's city council meeting via Zoom. She is under the weather, but would like to attend. She did submit a letter. And so I would ask that there be a motion to accept the request from Councilwoman Holly Anderson for a special accommodation to attend and participate as a voting council member in this evening's city council meeting via Zoom.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to have Holly Anderson fully participate as a voting member and receive a special accommodation for her illness this evening.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Is it a roll call or is this a voice vote, Jamie? All right, all those in favor say yes.
Yeah.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, so welcome. Now on to the mayor's comments. I just want to, yes, oh yeah, and now we go to the roll call. Thank you, Jamie.
Anderson? Please unmute yourself.
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Muncie?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you for accommodating. And so on to the mayor's comments. I first of all, want to welcome Logan White, Holly Anderson, and Russ Gardner. They were all sworn in today. So thank you so much. Congratulations and welcome. We appreciate you taking on this role. I also want to thank the DPW for all of your hard work with the leaf cleanup. You guys have been working so hard. And also with the tree lighting, both at Coughlin Park and at Wick's Park. It was a beautiful ceremony that we had on Saturday. So thank you to all the volunteers that made that happen on Saturday, as well as the elves that always help with the star on top of Mount Bald Head. It's always a great event for everybody to be there. And then next up on the agenda is next Saturday, we do have the holiday parade. That's in the agenda tonight, so look for that. And I just want to thank April Gundy and Bertie Holly for stepping up last minute to help make that happen. So we'll talk more about that later, but I just wanted to say those words for that. And that's it for now. City manager comments, is Ryan online?
He is, Mayor.
Okay, Ryan?
Hi, Madam Mayor, I'm here. I too am a little bit under the weather and I'm sorry I can't be joining your meeting. But congratulations to those who have returned to council and Holly and Mr. White, welcome. Sorry I can't be with you. So my manager's report is on page nine. It's a little bit later on in your agenda as well. I do want the council to be aware of a potential date for the strategic planning session for city council. And that's been earmarked for December the 20th.
Hey, anything else, Ryan? And anyone have any questions for Ryan at this point?
Yeah, Ryan, sorry that you're not here under the weather. Holly, glad that you're able to join us. Welcome, Logan, to the meeting. So for the strategic planning session, which I've attended two of them now, is it going to be with the same, are we talking about using the same consultant that we've used in years past?
Ryan?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay.
We discussed, yeah, discussed with Madam Mayor and the previous mayor as well, and they were comfortable with moving with the same consultant.
Yeah, and I personally have had to go to experience with her. I would challenge council though, as part of this discussion is I think what would be really incumbent on us is to really focus on maybe looking at a strategic plan for the city as opposed to a strategic discussion as part of that. I think where the city is really selling itself short and the citizens is that we don't have a strategic plan that we can point to for citizens to say, okay, where, like if we have five different strategic objectives that the city focuses on, where does a project fall into one of those five categories? Whether sustainability, whether it's, you know, infrastructure, whether it's whatever that case may be, I really think we're a little bit ahead of ourselves sometimes is that we get a project that comes to us. And it's difficult to say, okay, this is not budgeted, but does it fall under a strategic objective and does it move us towards meeting that strategic objective? Maybe I'm not seeing it or it's there and I'm not seeing it, but I think that's something that I would like to see the council really focus on this time. Develop a strategic plan. Many municipalities have them, and I think that's something we should, that we can put out on our website that our citizens can see. And actually helps us guide, and actually the city manager's comments under the council, council and city manager structure in his report speaks to that. The need for that type of an approach.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to agenda changes, and I have been informed that County Clerk Bob Janetski and County Commissioner Dean Kapinga are here and they would like to speak tonight. So do I have a motion to add them as guest speakers?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to add Bob Janetski and Dean Kapinga to our, as guest speakers for our meeting this evening.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, I have both of those. And then this is a voice vote. All in favor say yes?
Yeah.
Opposed? All right, so guest speakers, who would like to go first? Mr. Janetski?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, Bob Janetski with a brief update from your county clerk and register of deeds offices. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, if anything like Councilman Monk, you're worried stressing out about property fraud and title theft. Well, I'm here to help. I want to remind everybody in Sagatuck, Madam Mayor, and others that free from the register of deeds office is property fraud alert. You can go online tonight if you'd like and sign up for that, or you can call during business hours to the register of deeds office. Give them the name that your property is listed in, and then you will receive either a phone call or an email should somebody record something on or over your name. Don't, don't let Rudy Giuliani scare you about this. I want to make sure you've got this opportunity. I know for a fact that it works because just last week, a senior citizen called me in my office and said, Bob, somebody's trying to steal my property. I got an email from your office. I said, Mom, calm down. What's going on? So went online through the new searchable database that you can search all the property records from Alleghen County and found out, said, Mom, did they, did you pay off your mortgage recently? She said, yes, I did. Five days ago. I said, that's what was recorded. So encourage your constituents to take advantage of that. I want to commend Clerk Walters and her team on the manner in which they ran the recent November 7 election, did a great job for the citizens who turned out to vote. And the four candidates who were on that ballot, got a bigger lift for her come February of next year, but she and her team are, are working hard and well-tooled, and we appreciate their, their efforts. Didn't know if you're aware or not, Councilman Gardner, but the 48th Circuit Court records are now online up until March of this year. If you wanted information on perhaps the city was involved in some litigation, you'd have to call down to our office between the hours of eight and five or, or even drive down to 113 Chestnut to find exact, find out exactly where that case was moving. But now you can go online from your desk or heck, you know, if you're out at the corner bar engaging karaoke and meet that special someone, you wonder if she's over, if her divorce is finalized, you can go on at 2:00 AM from your laptop at home. Lots of opportunity there. Want to make sure you're aware of my most recent editorial. I won't read it to you here, but concerned about some of Lansing's strategies to potentially give away our electoral votes. Michigan should think twice about that. I do have in front of me, Madam Mayor, the most recent copy of my annual report to taxpayers filled with all the latest exciting information of what went on during the office in 2022. I'm not going to read it to you cover to cover because I do happen to know that Councilman Gardner does read it cover to cover and peppered me with a few questions via email after I presented to me all last year. So I'm just going to hit a few highlights. If you turn to page eight, as you know, last year was a very busy election year. And we set a, an all-time record in the office of the county clerk by training 683 election inspectors. We were really proud of that record. Unfortunately, we think that's going to fall next year with the 27 days of early voting countywide and the many inspectors that it'll take to cover that. Didn't know if you remembered or not, but Alleghen County no longer has any birthing hospitals. So if you look at page 11, all of the births now recorded in the county clerk's office are home births. So the midwife was very busy in 2022. In fact, we recorded a record of 42 home births throughout the county. That surpassed the previous year's record of 39 in 2021. If you turn to page 15, just a brief reminder of the offices of, of the services that we provide for veterans down at the county clerk's office. If you know of a veteran in the city or nearby who does not have his or her papers of honorable discharge registered with county clerk's office, encourage them to take a drive down to the courthouse and register those DD 214s with us. That's a free charge, free of charge service that we provide. The veteran should bring down his or her original papers of honorable discharge. We'll make a recording of that. We'll give that back to him or her and two free certified copies. And then as long as the veteran and his or her heirs need, we will continue to issue those free copies so they can access any veterans' benefits that they might need, including GI Bill benefits. And a reminder on page 15 there is that we do offer the Alleghen County Veteran ID card so they can take advantage of discounts or any other benefits, not just in Alleghen County, but throughout the nation. That's a service again for those who have that paper of honorable discharge filed with us. Quick look at what went on in the register of deeds office last year. I don't need to explain to people in this zip code what the white hot real estate market looked like back during the peak of COVID. However, on page 23, if you look at the top and the bar graph there with the maroon and gray bars, you see that we hit our all-time high of land recordings at the register of deeds office in 2021. That dropped off significantly in 2022 as both mortgage documents and land transfers fell quite a bit. However, if you turn the page and look up at the top still in the register of deeds office, you'll note that even though there were many fewer land transfers and recordings in ROD, there was a slight increase in that wave graph up at the top, a slight increase of the overall amount of value in the property that did change hands. Finally, Madam Mayor, a brief word about proposal two of 2022. It is going to strain all of our clerks and election inspectors countywide. We are already having four really, really good clerks retire. It's not what they signed up for. It's certainly not what Ms. Walter signed up for, and it's not what I signed up for when we originally ran for these jobs. So I'm encouraging our local bodies to strongly consider not only how we support our clerks and election inspectors, but how we compensate them given that they'll now be working two full weekends before each election next year and throughout the big elections. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have relative to property fraud alerts, mom paying off her mortgage, or the annual report.
Does anyone have any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Janetski, for being here. And I would highly encourage anybody to read this report. I happen to read everything anyway because just out of habit, but there's some really interesting statistics and little notes and historical things that Bob drops in here that I would encourage you to read. It's, it's a great, thank you, Bob, for being here. Appreciate it and your work.
Anyone else?
I just want to say a great job with the report as well. And maybe you might want to get with Mayor Douglas Jerry Donovan and put a little comedy act together because I thought he's paid for it. You had a couple of good laughs out of there.
Well done.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd also just mention that our state representative, Joey Andrews, just came in. I'd like to just speak if you could after I'm done.
Are we allowed to do that or can he do it during public comment at the top of public comment? Okay, okay, that's great. Thanks, Joey.
But anyway, I would just mention, I don't think I thanked you for our broadband funds, but something that was just a huge celebration for us last week. We had several stations that were there to celebrate getting the extra funds from the state and the feds for our broadband. So imagine a thousand miles of fiber between 11,000 and 12,000 residences, the poorest of the residences, getting, getting fiber from your broadband.
Yeah.
So you think of seniors, the help that would have to think of young children who before were driving all the way to a parking lot just to do their homework. And economic growth, I think it's just a big step. But I know you're part of just saying yes to that, so I thank you very much for that. Also, just to mention, I have mentioned this whole thing about the aquifer, and we've spent a lot of time and money just to try to do that. We're at the phase of going, how do we educate kids? How do we educate adults as far as the importance of the aquifer that's there? And I think I've told you that we're putting test wells in all around the county that will be determined purity and draw. So if you have a subdivision that you want to put in and it's like a 300 homes, you could actually do a test and go into something because it can actually handle that. Amount of water being taken from it. We haven't done that before, so we're still in the middle of that study and a system that can actually do that for the cities and townships. But we're getting closer to that, but a phase that we're looking at now is how do we educate kids in this vital, vital water essential that we all have to make sure that we do that right? Also, I wasn't, we had MSU extension come in with seven different people. So you think of flowers, you think of greenhouses, you think of soybeans, dairy farms. They came in, why didn't you know that we're here to help you with all those things? You know, if you have, you know, someone who has a greenhouse and they need help with some type of disease that they had, they're there for us, right? And you don't hear them enough. You don't see the material enough to go, wait a minute, they're there for our help. And speaking of help, I just mentioned that I'm part of Community Action, and even this past Thanksgiving, to think of all the people who try to help people. And like the boar's head out of Holland, everyone, I'm sure gets meat from them, but they, they even gave eighty boxes of chicken breasts for vets and for the poor. And there were so many different groups running at people outside of health facilities. I think it didn't just go on the hammer. I'm thankful to live in the community that we have, and it's really good. Today I met with Public Service Commission just on this whole thing of the Calkins Dam. I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that we're trying to really fight that. I mean, there's about a thousand residences that are around there that if this, the economic impact to their own homes that they've owned for all this time that were, that it would just devastate them. And we're trying to put in all the information, get all the information that we can, break pressure to them, just saying, wait a second, this is the only dam out of the, out of the 11 that's actually making money. And so we tried to look at all the pros and cons to it with them and had a great discussion with them, and that's been ongoing and will continue, continue with us just trying to look at, how do we try to help these people? There's like corner people in the Alleghen Lake Association, but many others that it was back. But I'm just wondering on that topic also, I have a great meeting. Thanks for letting me speak.
Anybody have any questions while he's here?
I just want to commend, I was down in Alleghen for my first jury duty selection. I didn't get to participate, but I was down there. And the staff was fantastic. You know, at the courthouse, they were wonderful, friendly and efficient. And I just have to say, it was worth, it was worth it to be down there. So thank you.
Also downtown is looking great. I know I've given you compliments before. It was so nice to drive downtown and see all the businesses abuzz. Kids coming out of Pizza Hut again, and, and, and I know all the businesses are happy that they're back up and running, but it looks great. I know there's a lot of work to do, but yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right, we're on to public comment on agenda items only. If anyone would like to come to the podium at this point? Anybody in the room? Is there anything on the agenda that you would like to? Agenda only. Okay, you'll, you want to wait till the end? Okay. Anybody online who would like to speak on agenda items only? All right, Jamie, anybody? Am I missing anyone? Okay, all right. So that moves us on to consent agenda. If I could have a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from November 11th?
Mayor?
Yes.
A motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from November 11th, 2023?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we are on to staff reports, boards, commissions and committees. This would be the city manager's report. Ryan, if you would like to go over anything specific?
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. No highlights.
Okay, thank you. The treasurer's report is Peter online. Peter, anything you'd like to mention?
No, everything's there. Tax bills will become, bill will be mailed Friday, so Saturday morning, we'll start taking your payments for winter tax bills. They'll be in the mail on Saturday.
Yay, all right. Peter, thank you. Planning and zoning.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you. No particular highlights. I just do want to welcome the two new council members, council member Anderson and council member White. Welcome to the council. So look forward to working with all of you.
Great. Any questions for Ryan? Okay, Department of Public Works, Scott?
Good evening. Yeah, likewise, like Ryan Cummins said, welcome to Logan and Holly Anderson on being elected. We're looking forward to working with you. Two things I just wanted to point out that have kind of been brought up to me since I put the report together. One is that it looks like the Sagatuck sign out in the township at Holland and Blue Star Highway. It got some, some damage. So we're not, I'm not exactly sure how that happened, possibly a car. One of the guys at Public Works, he's super into Christmas. He said, yeah, a couple of our swags are missing off of the sign. I was like, oh, what do you think happened? He's like, I don't know, but it looked like a car removed it for us. So, but there's no tire tracks and it's kind of odd.
And there's no police report or anything?
Not to my knowledge. So this was just brought up to me, so I, I plan on maybe diving into it a little bit. It's kind of an odd scenario. It's like, it's the township's property out there. But I don't know who, if we own the sign, if the township owns the sign. I don't really know, but I suspect that I'll be reaching out to the township manager sometime this week and try to get a little more info on it and see what we can do to get it back up. So. And then the other thing I wanted to add is that this week will be the, the last brush and leaf collection of the season. If you're driving into town, I, I noticed quite a few piles that of leaves that are sitting nicely on top of snow. So that's kind of our indicator that we really need to get all of our equipment set up for snow removal. Right now, I get a little nervous about not being prepared for this stuff, and so we need to get that stuff ready. That does take a little bit of time. And you know, if the weather breaks and we have a little more of an opportunity and we're driving through town and we still see leaves in people's yards, we may add a, a bonus brush and leaf collection. But hopefully people will just, you know, accept that this is the final one for the year.
Yeah, so Tuesday, Wednesday, right?
Tuesday, Wednesday. It's likely, it's probably going to take us four full days to complete that. So if we're not at the houses or in front of your house exactly on the scheduled day, feel free to keep putting stuff out until the city crew has serviced your streets. And then after your date and after the city has serviced your street, then it's over. So, thank you.
Thank you again, Scott. All right, oh, questions? Go ahead.
Not even questions, just more of a comment. I do, I do want to contrast Sagatuck with a lot of our neighbors. Sagatuck does pick up leaves and brush until the snow flies. Many other communities in town only do, or in the area only do it twice a month, and sometimes they stop much earlier than Sagatuck does. So I think if I talk about Sagatuck in terms of what it does for its citizens, this is something that I think a lot of people don't even really notice that it just goes on well past what other communities do. So I just want to thank you and your staff as well as the city for making that commitment to do that because I know it's not easy on the staff. As you said, it makes you a little anxious now when the snow's starting to fly and not quite ready for that yet. But I think that's just a service to the community that just doesn't really even get the attention, even though people just expect it to happen. So.
Just to piggyback on that, if I may, I noticed in Douglas, they have a leaf vacuum type thing. Is that contracted or do they own that equipment?
They own, they own that leave vacuum.
Would, is that something you would like?
We have, no.
I was more just curious.
I would be happy to have a conversation with anybody. We've been asked.
So no on the leaf vacuum?
Well, it's, it's just a matter of efficiency.
Okay.
You know, and the way that we do it out there, you know, I don't know if you saw in my, the, the stat that I put in that report, but the first brush and leaf collection that we had in November, we, we kept track. It was 200 dump trucks exactly. 200 dump trucks brushing leaves that we hauled out of town. And so in comparison, I've had a contractor come in and we've kind of demoed leaf vacuums and the rate at which we're hauling material out of town is unparalleled. I mean, a leaf vacuum, one, you'd have to do like two different collections because you'd have to separate a lot of the material.
Yeah.
Pumpkins and brush aren't, they're not going to go through a leaf vacuum very well. You'd have to have two crews going around with different goals.
Yeah.
But just, yeah, it all comes down to the rate at which we can pick leaves up.
Yeah.
And, and, and I do remember clearly there being a leaf vacuum that the city used back in years past when you could still burn leaves. So I remember Bruce and his crew going around with a big vacuum cleaner and, and that clearly was retired for good reason, it sounds like.
Yeah, they did not like it. They said that it clogged up all the time. That particular machine, I'm sure technology's advanced quite a bit since they had that unit, but they, it was pretty fatiguing on the operators.
Yeah.
You know, getting dust and debris in their nostrils all day and it's loud and then you have to separate the materials. It wasn't for them.
Good to know. Did you have something, Gregory? I'm sorry.
What's, what Scott and his team can do with a front-end loader and a dump truck is frankly a thing of beauty. I mean, I mean, it really should be put to the soundtrack of the Nut Quacker. I mean, it's such a precision operation.
Gregory, did you have something?
Yeah, a couple of, first of all, yeah, thank you about the sign. I'm sorry I didn't call you about that. I just, for some reason, assumed you knew. It was over the weekend. It was quite a little Facebook buzz about it. And so we were, a couple of us were kind of investigating it as well. I just, I assumed you knew. Next time I'll make sure I call you.
Whatever your investigation uncovered, I'm happy to learn it. I don't know.
Where do all those leaves go, by the way? Those, those dump trucks, where do you take them?
Yeah, so we have our, our airport property.
Okay.
Is out on 63rd Street. That's where we bring it to.
So there's a big pile of leaves there somewhere that I can maybe jump on.
Yeah, I don't know. If anyone's familiar with that, that site, you know, the public works kind of have, has its own site where we bring organic materials, brush, leaves, pumpkins, whatever.
Okay.
Shrubels. And you know, if you've ever been out there, it's, it's pretty interesting, I think, this time of year because there's a field that we have, and the whole field is about as tall as I am solid with leaves.
Oh, wow.
So it is a little bit to manage that site once we get everything out there.
Sure.
But it is pretty impressive when you step back and look at it. And for, you know, for the first time, I'm like, no, gosh, we gotta, we gotta keep a stat on what we're doing. It's just one after another, after another. And we knew it was a big number. We didn't know that, that it was going to be 200.
Yeah.
And that's just for one brush and leaf collection in November, and we're going to have two of them. So we're estimating that we'll have somewhere around 350 dump trucks.
Wow.
Just for the month of November.
I saw, I saw the guys out there blowing leaves today and I felt so bad for them. You know, they're just blowing leaves and the snow's blowing everywhere. Um, another thing, I wanted to give you props and, and thank you for helping with, working with the township to help repave the, bring the, to council to repave Bridge Street, which I'm so glad that we were able to, to take care of and hopefully pass tonight. So thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything from police tonight? Do we have anybody from the sheriff's department, Jamie?
No.
Okay, engineer. Hi, John.
Good evening. We've got a couple of items later on the agenda Greg just mentioned, so I'm not going to hit those. I'll save those for later. I did want to update you on our, on our road project for the year. This is on West East Tackin Taylor and the north end of Maple Street. By the skin of our teeth, we got the top course of asphalt down on the last paving day of the year. So that part of the project is done. The contractor still this week will be kind of cleaning up along the edges of that new pavement. We won't plant grass until next year. Obviously, it's not going to grow right now, but that project is, is coming along nicely and nearly complete now. So that was a, a big win against Mother Nature. Finally, we got one. But happy to answer any questions on anything in the report or there.
Any questions or do we want to save it for later on when the agenda comes come up?
Just a quick question about the north and, north, north end Maple. That, that has, as I mentioned several times, that has been a problem area ever since I can remember as a kid going down there and fishing for frogs and stuff, and it was always flooded. So in fact, that it's been improved to the point where it's been raised by 18 inches or two feet.
About 18 inches.
Yeah. Is the solution, in my opinion, than the culvert installation. So I'm really looking forward to having that corner view and for Scott and his staff too, to be able to plow that easily and not have to worry about torn up everything. Really looking forward to that improvement. I'm glad we've invested in that because it's just been a problem for a long time. So.
Yeah. Yeah, we discovered during the course of the project, we thought we were going to lower, lower the pond and, and the water level was going to come down. It did not. That drain has not been cleaned out. So we have to work with the county drain commissioner and, and see if we can get some cleanup done in the drain. We'll help that immensely. But yeah, the hard work is done now, I think.
All right, anyone else? All right, John, thank you. Thank you. Fire District Administration Board is Dan Fox here? There he is. Sorry, I didn't see you back there. Yeah.
I'm Dan Fox, council representative to the Sagatuck County Player District. Report of our 20th of November meeting where we had the pleasure of Helen Baldwin's company in the gallery. So you could give this as easily as I, it's nice. It was really, it's always nice gratifying to have people because there's, quite honestly, it's a rare occasion when we have anyone that isn't. it's a rare occasion when we have anyone that isn't somehow tied into the fire district. So thanks for coming. Just a few things. Among, Helen can bear me out on this. The chief spent a good deal of time on one topic, which was, and I'm going to try and be brief on this. The chief didn't try very hard if he was trying because he was not brief on it. There are schools within the fire district service area that have not obliged the testing necessary to ensure that emergency services can operate their radios within the building and talk to each other. Why that's the case, who ought to be blamed for that? There's no point in even going into it. But the schools, of course, operate as separate entities. They make that call. We've talked about a couple of strategies to include video perhaps for school board meetings so that parents understand that this is a real, real risk. If, certainly in the case of a fire, but also in the case of a shooting or something of that horrible nature. If you can't talk to the guy on the other side of the wall, it's very tough to strategize and, and operate successfully. I mean, it's, it's, it is truly a disaster waiting to happen. And when it happens, fingers are going to point in every possible direction. So Chief Janik has been a leader in this. He's made progress. The county is now weighing in on this. Trying to gently, and chief's been trying to not point fingers to try and gently work his way through this. But it, it has urgency, has urgency for him, both for the safety of the populace, which is part of the district's mission, but also for the safety of his people operating in that kind of environment where they can't talk to one another, can't ask for help, can't, you know, ask for a piece of equipment and so on and so forth. So I'm not going to go into identifying which schools. I will tell you Douglas Elementary is a, is a, is a model in this regard. The fire district was brought in, the study was done. It involves oftentimes adding these repeater devices within the school. They're small devices apparently high up on the walls. And they're able to then map the entire school and tell you if there are any dead spots. And that, and I've seen the map for Douglas Elementary. It is all green. High school, that'll be a, a subject after, after the work is done. Because you can't, you kind of can't do it in advance because things like the safe, I forget the term for it is the glass that's used, the more secure, bulletproof, but some sort of secure glass that's being used in a lot of these renovations causes, it, it, it operates against the radio signals. So until you have the glass and, and the equipment and all the rest of that in place, you can't figure out whether you have an interoperability problem or not and, and, and act to do it. It's not inexpensive to do this. Schools don't like that in their budget, I suppose, but it's also not, I mean, we're not talking millions of dollars here. So in any case, chief went on and on. I thought it was interesting. Another service thing he brought up and I thought was useful and that people should in general be aware of is all of us. Particularly those who own electric vehicles or know somebody who does. A fire in an electric vehicle can require, I thought the number was wrong, 30,000 gallons of water to extinguish. Those, I think our tankers are 7,500 or at most 10,000 gallons. We have two tankers to get water to that kind of an event. And if it's out on the highway, you're dealing with the distance and whatever. It's a matter of concern across the board. There's even, there's even a school of thought that says let them burn. Don't bother. Just let them burn. And places that have tried or moved in that direction have found that you end up creating, particularly with a vehicle fire on the highway, you end up creating a whole nother set of problems when people see fire trucks out there with guys standing around watching this thing go up and you get rear end collisions from people not slowing down or whatever. Anyway, so it was interesting. Also on the, an update on the hiring, the additional full-time personnel. There are 11 candidates as of our meeting. That number may drop because there are skills testing and other tests that take place. And finally, an interview. So it may drop from 11 or all 11 may go to the final, but it's moving forward. And then I guess finally, one of the things pointed out at the meeting, the chart, you'd have probably go on the website to see this chart. On the hours the fire district devotes to prevention activities, the blue bar on the far left, there is the short-term rental, not just Sogatuck, but district, short-term rental inspections, which is a significant number of hours. In a gratifying way, the, the brown bar on the far right, the highest of the bars is the amounts to the hours spent primarily in this case, in this recent report at Douglas Elementary School with the kids. Again, service for that. I did mention to the district, to the board that alerted them that the planning commission is, Sogatuck Planning Commission is due to engage on ordinance changes, potential ordinance changes and potential fee structure changes or whatever, as it relates to the whole short-term rental issue and opportunity or whatever that, and that specifically impacts the fire district because of the calls for increased numbers of, of, of annual or increased annual inspections and the cost of those inspections going up to cover the fire district costs. We are nowhere near that number yet. So FYI.
Any questions for Dan?
Welcome to the two new members. By the way, I don't want to be.
Yeah.
Hey, Holly.
Any questions for Dan? All right, on to.
Thank you, Dan.
The inner urban board, Gregory?
Not a whole lot to report from the last time. However, you know, we're working now to get plans to expand our building with the grant, which I spoke of before. We've got increased ridership. And we've got a meeting on the 30th, a committee where we're working on perhaps lengthening our hours. So we might have hours to lengthen as well. And that, anything else with the inner urban other than that? No, I'm learning my new role as treasurer. It's quite a responsibility. So I am learning that. I'm spending more time signing checks and learning financials. So.
Awesome. Thank you for your service as far as that's concerned as well. All right, Kalamazoo Lake Sewer and Water Authority. I don't believe Barry is here today. Is that right, Jamie? Okay. Cal Lake Harbor Authority, we are meeting in January. Zoning Board of Appeals, anyone here? Historic District Commission. Nothing at this point. Planning Commission, Russ?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We met on the 16th of November. The first item is on tonight's agenda for rezoning 120 Mary Street from C2 West, or Water Street East to R4, City Central Residential, I believe is the terminology for it. They recommend approval of that. The planning commission recommends approval. We also had a public hearing to amend the city zoning code for waterfront districts. It was, the meeting was extremely well attended because of some information that was out there about what the zoning code is meant to do. We, we helped correct some of those myths, some of those misconceptions. Many comments from the public at the meeting and after discussion and written and oral feedback, the zoning changes were tabled until the December meeting. There was some discussion about getting with some of the people that were at the meeting to talk about their concerns and to try to mitigate some of the concerns that they had. As well as we discussed the short-term rental task force recommendations and the planning commission has proposed a joint meeting with the city council to review recommendations. And that is more specific around to understand kind of we're all on the same page because there's going to be some things that are going to be discussed by the planning commission that the planning commission wants to make sure that there's not going to be, you know, one path and then the council wants to go another path. So there's an opportunity here to kind of collaborate, was the word that was used. So I think Ryan has probably come back to this after his time away. So that was, those were our three agenda topics.
Okay. Parks and Public Works Committee.
I meet tomorrow morning.
Great. Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail Study Committee. We'll get more on that unless Ryan Heiss wants to update us on anything.
No updates at the moment. Thank you, Madam.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Tri-Community Recycling Ed Hot Committee. I don't think we have anything new at this point. Request for payment, none. Approval of accounts payable, this would be, let's see. That's on 12A. So do I have a motion to approve the accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of $135,761.94.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any questions on it? Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I did get the invoices to take a look at because I had a specific question about the C2AE, $52,755, $52,755 and change. For the four invoices, I wanted to understand what that cost was. And so these go, these invoices go back to July, July, August, September and October. And the question that I have is, I, if I'm misunderstanding this, please correct me, but I believe that the city is the lead agents on that project. However, the financial responsibility for these costs are to be the township and the Friends of the Blue Star Trail, my memory serves. The city's made a commitment of $50,000 to support grant efforts. That was done a year and a half ago. So I just want to get an understanding from the city manager if he's able to answer the question. Is there a commitment or is the township and the Friends of the Blue Star Trail going to be reimbursing the city and our taxpayers for these expenses?
Ryan?
Madam Mayor, happy to answer the question. Mr. Gardner is correct in noting the fact that there is actually two agreements that the city has with both the City Village of Douglas, the Township and the Friends of the Blue Star Trail. The first agreement is what we call the phase one agreement wherein the Friends of the Blue Star Trail are going to pick up all costs associated with the original, original design. So to answer the question, then there's also a phase two agreement and there's a cost share allocation between the municipalities. So all the invoices, we're going to have to bill back. Mr. Gardner, based on the agreements that we have in place with the other municipalities and the non-for-profit.
Thank you, Manager. So the $52,000 and change, that's going to be fully reimbursed to our city taxpayers by the township and/or the Friends of the Blue Star Trail. Is that correct?
Everything in phase one and then, so anything that's labeled as phase two. And so the treasurer and I have asked for a breakdown, breakdown of the cause so we can get really specific into the, the agreements and the cost share allocation.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was comfortable with that. Two is that there was a invoice for $8,646.56 from Minor Supply Company, which got my attention. There's one line, one line item on the invoice for $8,100 for, can't even, 30 by 26 by 3100 slash RLCR. Is that, and I'm just curious as to what that is.
Scott?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, that, those are customized trash bags. We buy them in bulk. They're, I forgot, last time I purchased them, I, I haven't looked recently. They were like somewhere around a dollar a bag. So we buy them in these massive bulk rolls that they come shipped on pallets. They're up in our cold storage facility and we pull them out as needed. So usually historically you buy them once and they last like three, three years. I don't know what our current inventory level is, but I, I know that we're all set for a while.
I'll remind Russ of when we cleaned out the radar station, remember those amazing clear bags that I showed up with?
Yep.
That's, that's.
Peter reminding us that we were due to order them again and that they had gone up quite a bit in prices here.
Who'd have thought, you know, trash bags would rise to this level, but they, they do. But you're, you know, to your point, you know, people, they, you know, they fill these, these, these bins up with construction materials and you know, everything. So it prevents a mess.
They're way better than anything you can get at Home Depot. I mean, they're like, what, like six?
They're the best. We have the best garbage bags.
That's why all the workers come here.
Scott, thank you for the explanation. Any other discussion?
We'll just note that I think this is the final invoice for the Painting of the Rose Garden ironwork as well as Butler Street bathrooms, which if you haven't walked by or taken a look, they look great. So I just want to appreciate the effort that's been put there. So thank you.
All right, this is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. There are no introduction of ordinances, no unfinished business, which leads us to 15A, new business organizational meeting, appointment of council members with the departure of Holly Leo and Garnett Lewis. I had a chance to talk with various boards and committee members about these appointments. And at this point, I would like to appoint Russ Gardner to the Historic District Commission to replace Garnett Lewis, Holly Anderson to the Planning Commission and Scott Dean to the Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trails Study Committee to replace Holly Leo. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to appoint Russ Gardner to the Historic Commission, Holly Anderson to the Planning Commission and Scott Dean to the Tri-Community Trails Study Group.
Do I have a second? Thank you. At this point, any discussion?
The only discussion I would have is on the intermodal trail. Aren't there two council representatives? It was Holly Leo and Ken Truster?
Well, Ken wasn't a part of that, of our city council. So I only had to replace the city council person. At this point, I, if I need, has Ken Truster removed his name?
No, I just asked because I thought he was a member of council at the time that he was appointed. That's, that's what I'm asking.
I don't know. I believe he can stay on as a resident and as long as his term hasn't expired at this point. That's where we're at with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, anyway, I'm just asking that question because that's, that was something that I had asked about previously and didn't get a clear answer. So the committee does not, or the trail committee does not need two city council members to just, one city council member and a resident?
And a resident. Yeah.
Mr. Truster would remain the resident and then Scott Dean, if this motion is approved, will become the city council.
To take over Holly Leo's position, yes. And then there's, you know, there's going to be more interviews because as you saw in the packet, there is a resident that will have to take over a planning commission position because we have now two, you know, members of council. And we can only have one member of council on the planning commission. So now a resident will need to step up and take that position to be on the planning commission and we'll start taking interviews for those. I'll be working through that. So.
Yeah, I would just add that the planning commission is near and dear to my heart. I love serving on the planning commission. I think this is an opportunity for Holly, especially with her work leading the short-term rental task force, to continue to serve in that capacity. My, married with community and experience here, I think will serve any of these committees well. I think I've done well with commission. I, I will certainly miss being there, but will look forward to serving with the Historic District Commission.
Great. Any other discussion? All right. So we have a motion and this is a voice vote. So all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Now on to 15B, 850 Park Street. This is on page 22 of your packet. The motion is actually on page 23. So.
Mayor?
I believe, does anybody want to set this up first before we take a motion?
Madam Mayor, you have both the, the honor and the privilege of having both John Moxey and Jake Witty with you tonight. I mean, I, I could, I can frame this pretty quickly. I think the, the council's been discussing making some repairs to an erosion issue on North Park Street. I think the city's been talking about it, at least staff has been talking about it for well over a year. We've gone back and forth with actually two homeowners, both at 850 and 856 Park Street. Trying to basically come to a negotiation wherein they contribute to some of the costs for making erosion repairs. The city will pay the majority of the cost. And so I think that the figures lay out at 2,000 per home, which they would contribute, city would contribute up to 40,000. The city would make the repairs. The city would warranty the repairs for six months. After which then the homeowners would become responsible for everything that's put in place.
All right. Are there any questions about this before we have the motion?
I, I'll comment after the motion is.
Okay, that's great. So if we would like to take the motion first and then we'll go into discussion.
I move to approve the storm sewer and erosion mitigation agreement between the city and landowners for 850 and 856 Park Street, including authorization. including authorization for Crown Excavating and Kramer Services to complete the work at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and sign any contractor invoices slash contracts to complete the work set forth in the agreement.
I'll second.
Right. All right. Um, at this point, we, we do have Kyle here. If you want to get up here and, uh, answer any questions anyone might have on all of this. I know we've talked about this, um, for quite a while, so.
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, I, I think this is, the, this agreement is generally consistent with what our office is communicating with the council and the legal opinion we provided and the uh, closed session deliberations that we conducted in the past. So I, I think at this point it kind of speaks for itself unless there are, uh, any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I don't have anything further to offer.
Anything?
Uh, not a question, just more a comment about the, uh, project. And I've actually, and I know several council members have actually talked with property owners to get their perspective on this. Um, and I've had the opportunity to talk with Scott Herbert about this as well. I just want to commend everybody for coming together with this because, um, uh, this is a project that I think has been two years in the making, if I'm right, about two years. I see some nodding heads, so I'm close. Two and a half. That this is a, in my opinion, a satisfactory conclusion to this. It represents a cost that we hadn't anticipated. However, um, the fact that we've got the property owners, uh, with us in the agreement speaks well to Mr. Moxie and Scott Herbert and their work, and also Jake and Chris Patterson with the property owners. Um, I really appreciate the effort that you folks have put into this. This is really speaks well to our opportunity to be able to work with property owners. Um, you know, you can always look back and say, could we have done this differently to avoid this cost earlier on? Perhaps, perhaps not. Depends who you talk to. Um, but I'm just in support of this because this is something that will make the property owners happy. They've got a little bit of skin in the game, so to speak, as well as the city's making the investment to try to correct the problem.
All right, anyone else?
Just quickly, Mayor, um, John, I hate to put you on the spot, but I believe when we talked about this as a council previously, um, your firm was going to maybe help out a little bit with, with the costs, and I don't know how that verbal commitment sort of got worked out with staff.
Um, we're, we're, uh, standing ready to participate. Um, yep. Um, what, we, we haven't discussed numbers at this point, but yeah, definitely. That offer's still a hundred percent good.
Okay, I, I, I trust you guys to work that out then with staff in terms of what's fair. So thank you.
All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to fifteen C. This is Bridge Street repaving. It's on page thirty-two of your packet.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, we've talked about this for quite a while, and, um, again, this is another great example that Russ had talked about, about collaborating, um, uh, and working with our residents for their needs and working with the township as a project together. I praised, um, Scott on his hard work for it. I'm very happy to, uh, make the motion to approve the agreement between the city of Sagatuck and Sagatuck Township to share road construction costs for Bridge Street in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so I, I got, I got it from Russ first, so we'll take it from, uh, Mr. Gardner. Um, any discussion on this?
Yeah, I would just, um, just thank Scott Herbert and John Moxie for their work with, um, uh, Daniel DeFranco at the township. I had a chance to call the manager last week and discuss this project, and he was highly complimentary of Scott Herbert and Mr. Moxie in terms of working on this intergovernmental agreement. Um, you know, as, as, as been said, it was in the note, we talked about this about a year and a half ago or so, and had chosen to actually waive the requirement that they hook into the sewer and water to be able to, um, um, uh, develop their properties, but also acknowledging the fact that Bridge Street was a mess, at least that portion of Bridge Street. Um, so I'm, I'm happy with this. I just give a lot of validation to the, you know, taking the initiative to get this to the table for us so we can make, make a motion and, um, approve this. Um, this will also, I think, satisfy a lot of concerned citizens who are maybe not necessarily city residents, but township residents. Uh, if you count the numbers over there, it clearly benefits township residents more than it benefits city residents. But as when I talked with Daniel DeFranco, he said, all we need to do is call him and ask, which we did, and here we are. And they're agreeing to step up to, you know, one-third or excuse me, thirty thousand of a hundred thousand dollar project, so thirty percent. And I'll say the township doesn't have an obligation to do that. They're not obligated, they're not legally obligated to be at the table with this. So I thank Mr. DeFranco for his work with the city, and I think this is just another example and opportunity where we look forward to further collaboration with, with our government, um, neighboring municipalities, so.
All right, any other discussion or comments? All right, roll call as well.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, this is fifteen D, six fifteen Park Street, public hearing on the waiver from the moratorium request. It's on page thirty-six. And Ryan, if you, yeah, if you would like to, uh, help us out with this one?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. If you don't mind, maybe we'll just, uh, maybe call in the, the public hearing to order, and I can provide a brief overview, and then we can kind of take it from there, if that's okay?
Okay. Um, could I have a motion to call this public hearing on six fifteen Park Street, a waiver from the moratorium request? Could I have a motion to start the public hearing on it?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to start a public hearing, uh, for the, um, the waiver request for a moratorium. I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to start the public hearing on a waiver for the moratorium request for six fifteen Park Street.
I'll second. Second.
All right, we have a second. Five Muncie, um, is this a voice vote? Uh, roll call, I'm sorry, that's a roll call to start the public meeting?
Baldwin, Muncie, Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ryan.
All right, thank you, Council. Um, so back in, uh, early, uh, March, uh, six fifteen Water Street submitted a zoning permit, uh, to, to make some various improvements on their property. Uh, they suffered some flooding back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty when the waters were high on the river. Um, as they were working through, uh, some, some issues with FEMA and, uh, some funding, um, part of their project proposal was also to do some structural improvements, uh, to the, to the building as well. So they submitted for zoning approval back in March. Uh, at that time, uh, the staff were evaluating some issues related to the value of the building, um, and whether or not the improvements rose to the level of being a substantial improvement and triggering, uh, requirements by FEMA to actually raise the structure to a foot above the base flood elevation. So while all of this was occurring and this review was ongoing, the, the council, uh, enacted the, the temporary waterfront moratorium, which included the resort, uh, zoning district, which six fifteen Park Street is included in. So by the time we concluded a decision on whether or not, uh, the, the proposed project was a substantial improvement, and whether or not all those zoning requirements were met, they also ran into the issue of being subject to the moratorium. Uh, from the staff perspective, we believe that the improvements were actual site improvements and, and subject to the moratorium. Uh, as we've gone over the last several months, the, uh, property owners have, uh, worked to, to gain an independent appraisal and are working through the substantial improvement issue. They're working on, uh, permits with Eagle right now related to the floodplain. Um, assuming, uh, they received that permit, they'll essentially be ready to move forward with their, uh, zoning permits, but the moratorium remains, uh, in effect, at least through the end of December. Um, at this point, your, your planning commission has certainly worked very diligently over the last several months on, uh, the waterfront assessment project. Uh, I think you're all aware of, uh, the, 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 the work that they've done and have been doing. In fact, they just met a couple of weeks ago and, and did have a public hearing uh, on the proposed waterfront changes, but they're not quite ready to make a recommendation to you. So uh, the owner, the lower, uh, you, level, uh, unit owners of sixteen, six fifteen Park Street have requested a waiver from the temporary waterfront moratoriums. Remember, there's a police powers moratorium and a zoning ordinance moratorium in effect. And so the, the language and the ordinances that the city council ultimately approved allows for, uh, a waiver mechanism. So long as you conduct a public hearing, which you're doing here tonight, uh, we provided notice of that public hearing in the newspaper and to property owners within three hundred feet. Uh, and essentially the property owners have to demonstrate to you that they would suffer immediate irreparable harm as a result of not being granted, or if they aren't granted a waiver. Uh, so the applicants are here, uh, this evening to kind of prevent, present their requests formally to you. Um, staff is happy, uh, and legal counsel's here as well to answer any questions you may have on what the definition of immediate and irreparable harm might be, and then offer a recommendation for you as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and do we have someone from the condo association here that would like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, city council, for all that you do. I also noticed several owners, uh, that are watching online. Thank you, uh, for being, being here as well. My name is Drew Anthony. Uh, I am an owner of a lower level unit at Holiday Hills Yacht Club. In May of two thousand nineteen, Holiday Hills Yacht Club condominiums had four lower condo units damaged due to two years of flooding, historic flooding. While the eight units on the top have been fully functional, uh, and used by their owners since this time, uh, my unit and three other units, uh, have gone through three summers of not being able to use our homes. The reason this has taken so long, uh, Ryan, thank you, Ryan, also, uh, for, uh, giving us the opportunity to be here, leading us in this direction. He, he, um, uh, listed several of those reasons why it's taken, uh, as long as it has. Fortunately though, uh, in these last two and a half years, we have resolved all the issues that have led up to our initial building permit, um, request in mid-March of this year. However, now we are being held up by a moratorium. I have not been able to use my home for three, over three years. The owners of the three other units have not been able to utilize their home for three years. If we are held up by this moratorium, we will be out a fourth summer uh, from being able to utilize our homes. The primary reason for our permit is to rebuild our four units downstairs along with a few common areas. There are no extensions being built. There are no add-on dormers or rooms. Our square footage will not increase. Though engineers has, have determined that our building's, uh, structure is strong and unmoved from the flooding, our association has agreed to take advantage of this time and install helical piers and grade beams so that today's technology will preserve yesterday's beauty for years to come. Last month, there was a photo one. It was, it was a, a best photo, uh, here in our city. Uh, you'll notice that the picture was taken of our iconic Holiday Hills Yacht Club. It's, uh, lavished with the radiant colors of the oak and maple trees behind it. Neither the exterior or the interior of the building's look or function will change during this building project. As far as my home is concerned, this moratorium prevents me from utilizing my property. It adds to a three-year struggle. This moratorium is by doubt, by no doubt, immediate and irreparable harm. It is with this struggle that I ask the city to please consider our request for rave waiver and allow Holiday Hills Yacht Club to permit our building project through our city's building department. Uh, with me today, uh, is Ed Z, our architect, and also Mike DeYoung, our contractor. You're welcome to pose any questions to them as well, but I appreciate you hearing me out on this.
Um, is there still more, uh, public comment? Are we allowed to still have public comment on this as well? So if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on this, you are welcome to go to the podium. All right, and I will open it up to anyone online, um, who would like to speak on this as part of this public hearing. Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Hi, Cliff Poloney. I'm owner of two units downstairs.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Hi, I, I appreciate your time. Uh, just to restate what, what Drew had just stated, it's been three years since we've been able to, to, uh, to use, uh, uh, condos. Um, as he mentioned, you know, we're not, we're not building up, we're not building out, the, 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 the building will be elevated. Um, the, the footprint is exactly the same. The interiors will be the same. We just simply want to rebuild what was there before so we can do that. I believe we're close to, to receiving our permits, or at least very, you know, close to receiving our permits. So the only thing at the point where if we do receive our permits, uh, that would keep us from building, um, reconstructing is, is the moratorium. And so, um, not to take any more of your time, Drew stated our points pretty succinctly. I just want, I mean, I love Sagatuck. My family and I, I come there every summer. I'm from Battle Creek. Um, I'd like to retire there someday, and I just would like to be able to, to use my units, uh, and just reconstruct them, they, the way they were before the flood.
All right, Cliff, thank you so much. And before I get to council comments or questions, is there anyone else online who would like to speak during this public comment session? Okay, hearing none. Um, if I could just ask a clarifying question first, are we, um, oh, are, anyone else like to speak before we close the com, public comment portion of this? Okay, so then may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, motion to close the public hearing on the waiver from moratorium request for six fifteen Park Street.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, and is this a roll call? To come back into?
Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Um, that was a bit clumsy, but I'm, you know, this doesn't happen as often during some of these meetings. Um, and if you wouldn't mind, if I could just ask a clarifying question, um, we are just grant, the possibility of granting the waiver tonight, do they still, the condo association, do they still have to go in front of the planning commission with their plans, or have they done that already?
Yeah, so this wouldn't, this wouldn't abrogate any other required zoning approvals. This is just determining whether or not they remain subject to the moratorium.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, any questions then, from council or any comments?
I'll, I'll kick it off, Mayor. Um, I guess my first observation, and anyone here can correct me if I'm wrong.
Man, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Should we do a motion before we have discussion, or do we?
Um, so we, oh, do we need a motion to go back into open session? I mean?
Well, um, no, but a motion.
A motion to.
Discuss the topic.
Oh, you want, so you want a motion, yea or nay on this? Okay.
Oh, okay.
Motion. I'm happy to make a motion.
So, okay, um, there are, um, a couple of things. If you want to make the motion, do you need, are you adding anything to it?
No, I'm not going to be adding anything to it.
All right.
Madam Mayor, a motion to grant six fifteen Park Street a waiver to the temporary moratorium established under ordinances number two-three-zero-six-one-two-dish-A and number two-three-zero-three-two-two-dish-B. For the proposed site improvements based on the following findings, the owners have demonstrated that they will suffer immediate and irreparable harm.
I'll second.
Great. And at this point, uh, this is a discussion. We can take up any questions or discussion at this point. Go ahead, Scott. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and once again, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but this feels very much like, um, a disaster recovery project as opposed to any type of new development or renovation. I think I've heard commitments, uh, from from the folks during the public hearing that there's no intention to change the look, exterior look of the building, or to raise its height to a, a, a level that would be something that would concern their neighbors. Just correct me if I'm wrong, is there anything that I'm missing here? It's, I'm, I'm, go ahead, Ryan, thanks.
Yeah, that, that, that's, uh, correct, uh, council member D and D. Um, the work related to the structural improvements and the helical piers aren't necessarily related to the, the, the flooding. Um, that's, that's kind of additional work that they've decided to do all at once, considering that the lower units are damaged, and now seems like a good time to do that. So it's not entirely related to the, the flooding issues, but, um, you're correct in that they're not, uh, increasing any, any heights. Um, in fact, based on the, their appraisal at this point, as, as long as Eagle approves their floodplain permit, they're not going to have to elevate it, uh, above the base flood elevation. So, and the approval of the waiver tonight is specific to the proposed site improvements. They wouldn't be able to go and tear down the building or propose something along those lines based on this waiver. This waiver is specific to their request before you.
So, so, you know, the gist of it though is it's, it's basically disaster recovery from, you know, an act of God, basically, that, you know, has damaged their property, and they're just looking to return it to the way it was, essentially, with obviously some modern, you wouldn't rebuild it, you know, with old technology. I get that. Am I, my, generally?
For the lower units, certainly.
Yeah, okay. So my, I guess my second question then, I mean, I, I think this moratorium was set up very well to create this, you know, this relief valve of this waiver. I would just ask council, legal council, uh, if this creates any loopholes that we should be concerned about, uh, for future waiver requests.
Yeah, so I think every waiver request needs to stand on its own, and there's, you know, two primary requirements that an applicant bears the burden of demonstrating to the council, and that's immediate and irreparable harm. Um, I, I think specifically the, the aspect of irreparable harm in a, in a legal sense, that refers to a harm that, that can't be fixed by money damages. It, it's not compensable through monetary relief. Uh, and so if, uh, And so if another, you know, property owner within the city can meet that standard, then they should be granted a waiver, but I don't think this would open the proverbial floodgates if the council were inclined to, to grant this based on the fact that, you know, this isn't just a, an issue of, you know, maximizing profit. To me, it appears that it's, it's a fundamental question of whether the property can be used at all.
Right.
Anyone else?
Yes, please. Yeah, I would concur with Scott in that it's a disaster recovery. It's, they've been through the wringer with FEMA and appraisals and every other thing, and I've got confidence that they still, knowing that we still have to go through zoning and planning for any of the plans and that, so that they're, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna make, jump through those loopholes. And I think that the sooner that they can get that repaired, the better, the longer it stays in disrepair, the worse it's going to be. So I don't see any reason not to grant this waiver.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Logan.
I'm familiar with the property. I do like viewing by there. No, sad to see what happened with that. We all remember that damage. I'm excited to see that they're moving forward and helping that out again. As far as the exact phrasing of the suffer immediate and irreparable harm, I do feel like the harm is fairly immediate. Just because it's continued, it doesn't mean it's not immediate to me. And then irreparable harm, you know, going on, losing a half decade near of summer memories in Sagatuck feels pretty, pretty irreparable to me. And I would hate to be the party that stands between, you know, those people coming back. So I'd like to see this go through.
Russ, did you have something?
Yeah, I would just add, as before the meeting started, there was a question from one of my fellow council members about why this, or a little bit of confusion why this was on the agenda. And so we threw explanation, we were able to, you know, tell, tell that council member, which I'll say here too, is that the planning commission heard about this waiver request, but didn't review it because it wasn't required. It's a council action that has to be taken as a result of waiving it for zoning purposes. So planning commission, I can't say that we would, I, I would be in support of it whether I was planning commission or here at council as well because of the reasons that have been mentioned by fellow council members. The very interesting thing that I read in the notes was that, and something that kind of struck me, I had a conversation with one of the property owners several months ago. And when I saw the numbers, it, it was like, whoa, wait a minute. So we submitted our first building permit mid-March 23. It was declined because the city of Sagatuck had dropped the assessed value of our building from $980,000 in 2020 to $478,000 in '21. Almost half, but it put them below the FEMA 50% rule, which made them ineligible, which has added to their financial burden. So the, the question in my mind, and I think the answer is, is why the assessed value go down? Probably because from the damage, I'm presuming from the floods back in 19 and 20, right? Is the presumption?
You'll have to speak at the podium, I believe.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just for those at home. Thank you.
We were confused like, like you were. We did hire an independent appraiser, spent a lot of money in doing so, and he found that our suspicions were correct too. Our, our property was valued at a lot higher rate than what, than what was listed. So I believe that we're 100% okay to meet that requirement.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So at this point, as the city raises the price value of the property, you know? Sorry, didn't mean to put anybody on the spot, but.
That's, our assessor is aware of their appraisal that they obtained, has reviewed it, provided me with some feedback. I'm not exactly sure how that, that process worked with his office and reassessing the value.
Okay, but presumably that information for the independent assessor as well as this will maybe benefit them for some additional funding perhaps? I'm just asking just as a general interest.
Additional funding and?
Well, because they, because they fell below the FEMA threshold, this will maybe potentially put them above it. It's just more of a general.
So that threshold relates to an analysis of whether or not, if, if somebody has damage or they're making a substantial improvement to their property, which basically means that their, the, the value of the construction is more than 50% of the value of just the building excluding land, then FEMA essentially says that you have to bring your, your building or structure into compliance with the floodplain regulations, which in this case, a portion of it is in the floodplain. So in the previous analysis, they were going to have to raise this to a foot above the base flood elevation. So by the, the value of this structure being 1.9 million, the value of their construction being much less than that, they're below the 50% threshold and won't have to actually pay to elevate it.
Got it. Thank you. And, and just to comment on what the attorney says, this does not abrogate the city or the property owners from having to go through the process of getting it approved from an actual site standpoint.
This particular case, you know, we still have to finish a zoning review, but at this point, it's not something that has to go to the planning commission for approval.
So correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions after this discussion? Okay, so at this point, it is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, this goes to 15E, 120 Mary Street rezoning. It's on page 40. Ryan, you want to take this up again?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Owners of 120 Mary Street have submitted a rezoning request to rezone 120 Mary Street from the C2 Water Street East zoning district to the R4 City Center Transitional Residential Zoning District. So by way of further detail, background and analysis, there's a report that was provided to the planning commission in your meeting packet. Essentially, if somebody submits a zoning request, the planning commission initially reviews it and conducts a public hearing, much like you just did for the previous case. So the planning commission did conduct the public hearing. And then analyzed the four factors that are in your zoning ordinance to do a rezoning. So the planning commission isn't limited to these four factors, but at least has to consider these four factors. And so staff provided an analysis, which is included in your meeting packet. The planning commission analyzed the four factors and unanimously recommended that the, the city council approve of the rezoning. And so now it's before you as a city council, you essentially have the official ordinance before you to, to, to rezone the property. You also have to evaluate these, these four factors. You're not limited to these four factors. At this point, you could either approve of the rezoning, you could deny the rezoning and state your reasons for doing so. You could choose to hold your own public hearing if you wish, or you could request that the planning commission further study and report back to you on this particular request.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance number 231127-A, an amendment of section 154 dot 043 of the code of the city of Sagatuck zoning map, so as to rezone the land commonly described by tax identification number and is located at 120 Mary Street Lot that is currently zoned C2 Water Street East to R4 City Center Transitional Residential District.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second by Baldwin. Discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just give an update from the planning commission. So the planning commission originally had this request for rezoning back at our October meeting. And it was tabled at that point because it was not a representative there from the Wickwood, which actually owns the property. And a representative came to the meeting in November. They did not realize that attendance was required. It really wasn't technically required. However, the planning commission had a number of questions about the process and some of the thoughts that were behind this. And the representative was able to answer those questions and some of the, some of the concerns which, which were brought up, which, which were essentially mitigated was that was a spot zoning situation. It's not a spot zoning situation. Also too, is that we were talking about some of the future use for the Wickwood property. So what we got from the property owner at the, at the meeting was that this was to allow them to be able to short-term rental the property for the next 12 months. But they have ultimate plans to turn it into a bed and breakfast and maybe even perhaps attach it to the Wickwood with some of the words that were used. So there's going to be more going on, but this was an opportunity for them to be able to utilize the property in a way that they could financially, you know, make it, make it sustainable for the next 12 months, but they may be coming back to us for additional work on this. So. But we appreciated her showing up and talking with us and answering our questions. So.
Any other questions, discussion? I, you know, listened in on that meeting and the fact that in the C2 Water Street East District, they are only allowed to rent the upper floors. Is that how I had it correct? And it's a whole house. It was just interesting because it just happens to be in a zone that that was what was allowed. And hence why we have a moratorium on the water, the water area to be able to, you know, relook at some of these things that have gone on and a lot of, you know, properties have changed hands. So I think this, it makes sense to me that this would be able to be done. But any other questions or comments for Ryan or any, anyone else?
I think what helped me to support this is that where the, where the building is located to begin with, and the fact that it was a residential building for many, many years, and it fell under a new category now that the old residents had lived. I couldn't imagine anything else or a business being in that house, either a commercial. It certainly isn't set up for commercial. I know the inside of that house personally, and, and I think it's a good fit.
Okay. All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Thank you, Ryan. 15F, this is the general service agreement with C2AE for design and construction of Blue Star Trail multimodal path. This is on page 48.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Ryan Heiss.
Yes, hi, thank you. Happy to address this one. So the Parks and Public Works Committee, they continue to work on the Blue Star multimodal path. Just as a reminder, the construction date is slated for 2025 for the project. The Parks and Public Works Committee, they're going to start to get into some of the nuances of the project, namely to deal with the, the pallet sign. And that's going to likely have to be shifted a couple of feet over. There's an opportunity to do some landscape and hardscape work there. And then the crossing across Lake Street is going to be an important aesthetic to review. And then the bridge crossing itself, there's going to be some vertical design elements that we'll have to work through in cooperation with the City Village of Douglas to create the separation between the multimodal path and the road itself. And so to get into that more nuanced design work, the Parks and Public Works Committee and city staff were recommending that the, the council enter into a separate general service agreement with C2AE to facilitate the design and the construction documents.
Do we have a motion? The sample motion is on page 48.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Allow us, I'd like to make a motion to allow staff and legal counsel to review a general service contract with C2AE to facilitate the unique design aspects within the city of Sagatuck for the construction of the Blue Star Trail multimodal path. Allow Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem to execute the general service contract.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would actually like to, and I don't know how this is going to work, I, I would actually like to table this because the agreement itself does not have any information regarding the financial, potential financial commitment that the city might have for this. There are no dollar amounts in the agreement. And that, in my perspective, is a, an agreement that's not ready for us to approve. We should know what we might potentially be paying per hour or whether it's by project number two is, I really think this is a project that this should not, we should not authorize the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, not, no disrespect intended, to execute the general service contract. That should come back to council for our final agreement, especially with the numbers that the investment might look like. This seems like a blank checkbook, in my opinion. And since this is, and maybe, maybe Ryan can, city manager can answer this question. Is this the phase two now?
Ryan?
Yeah, happy to answer, answer Councilman Gardner's questions, and I think his point is a fair one without having the hourly rates in this general service agreement that could be worked through with staff, but certainly we could return with that. Also, if the council is more comfortable with a not to exceed amount for this, that would help. And then to the question itself, is this part of phase two? This steps out of the boundaries of phase two. And as an example, the township has some independent nuances or projects that they're working on with the Blue Star Trail. They have to incorporate the, the roundabout that they're working on. That's nuanced, and that's going to be a specific cost to them. They have to work through some archaeological costs. That's nuanced to them. That's their cost. I think they, they also have some other bench areas that they're designing. That's also going to be their cost. So each municipality has costs that are unique to them. This, this project that we've laid out in the executive summary or the cover page, those are unique to the city of Sagatuck. And the, and the way that we've designed that is that the citizens of Sagatuck were going to be the ones that would be reviewing this in a public forum so that we thought that was important.
May I make a suggestion? If we could allow for staff and legal counsel to review this, but then come back to us once we know numbers, is that allowed?
But I mean, Mayor, that, that appears, the first part of the motion is already there. It's just says staff and legal counsel to review a general service contract.
But then just get rid of the allow Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem to execute the general service contract. So Helen, would you like to amend your motion?
I'd like to make a motion, amended motion, to allow staff and legal counsel to review a general service contract with C2AE to facilitate the unique design aspects within the city of Sagatuck for the construction of the Blue Star Trail multimodal path.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Does that, does that work as far as coming back to council then, once that?
So.
It allows us to review it, but then we'll, you know, it'll still come back to council so we can see the contract with the numbers and.
Right. So I'd, I'd like to see the money too. I hate to approve something. Like you said, this really does look like a blank check. So.
And, and the other, the other concern I have is that we have not seen a lot of information coming to us in terms of a lot of the information that was discussed this evening already about the project regarding the pallet sign, that's going to be a, that's a big, big thing for this community. There's going to be a lot of, lot of discussion around that. Any proposals around Lake and Blue Star Highway are going to be big discussions. I know there's been discussions in the past about this as well as the bridge itself. I could see this being, and again, it sounds like this is going to be our responsibility, maybe some township responsibility if it's township area. But ultimately, this is going to be city taxpayer responsibility. So I, I am not comfortable yet until I know kind of what, well, not even kind of. I want to know pretty closely what we're talking about in terms of investment here. Because this is not grant funded. This is not covered by the $50,000 that we've already committed. This concerns me from a cost standpoint. I, I just don't have enough information in front of me. And, and I'd like to see some updates in terms of what the intermodal or multimodal group has been talking about underneath the Parks and Public Works Committee. I've heard some comments from people too about this vendor that they've been pretty, some, some, sometimes difficult to work with and not responsive. I've heard some comments from folks around that. That's not my experience, but just what I've heard from some people that work with them. So I have some concerns about this agreement as well as, I'd like to see some additional information about where we are past with Mr. Dean being the new member. Like to see an update on where we are in these discussions.
And I as well would like to see updates. Since I've been on council, I haven't heard really much updates at all on where this project has been going. I know that I can go look for it, but and as well, and I'm glad that Scott is serving that position. I'm looking forward to having better updates about what's going on.
I guess when I look at this motion as amended, by allowing staff and legal counsel to review a general services contract with C2AE, we could get some of these questions answered.
Right. That's my view.
Yeah.
So I'd like to call the question.
And, and I, and I believe that we'll, you know, be coming forward with a lot more to it because this is just the, the contract to go into it with them. And then things will come from, you know, public hearings and so forth from there, I assume.
Yep. So I just want to clarify that the motion will ensure that that contract, once it's settled, comes back to council for approval with the rates and additional information. Again, I didn't look at it in great amount of detail, but the fact that there were no numbers in it was the first thing that jumped out at me. So I think we can do better with this, and I just want to make sure that our motion, make sure that this comes back to us for review and final approval.
All right. So at this point, we are just allowing staff and legal counsel to review a general service contract. So they will review it and bring it back to us.
There's nothing about entering into a contract with anybody in the motion.
Okay. So if I could have a roll call on just the motion there, on the amended motion.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Thank you so much. And on to 15G, special event application for the holiday parade. It is on page 55.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like.
I would like to make a motion to approve the special event application for the annual holiday parade to be held on December second, twenty twenty three.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this?
Yes, please. I mostly, I just want to comment to thank April and Birdie for really stepping up and saving Christmas. It's a, it's anytime, it's easy to focus on negative things again and and all you have to do is really look around and then people are really willing to help and and make an effort. And without people like that, Sagatuck isn't what what it, what it is and what it needs to be. So I'm very grateful for our organizers.
Yeah.
And I can't wait to approve this.
Yes, go ahead, Gregory.
After facilitating this event for many years in the in the past, I'm very, very pleased to have Birdie and April Gundy. April will be working her butt off that day. I had her on our show ninety two seven, the van yesterday morning. And she talked about all the details on the parade and just want to, just want to thank her and go ahead and thank her for all the hard work she's done since she started Operation, Operation Hope and and all the great work that they've done. So.
And just the Sadaba applications just in there for reference. Yeah, I was wondering.
Since council approved that app already, I put the first one in that you approved previously and this new app that they submitted was because Sadaba dropped out.
There's a time change on there too.
There's a time.
Yeah, we do want to recognize that there is a time change. It was originally a one o'clock parade. It's now eleven o'clock. And and you said you already have the safety meeting, right, Jamie? Yep, and everything is okay with the safety meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
All set. It's a shorter route by a couple of blocks, but everything else is approved by fire, police, and APW.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're now on to public comment on anything you would like to speak of, non agenda items or agenda items, whatever you would like to talk about. Anyone in the audience, please come to the podium.
Thanks for hanging with us so long.
Yes, it was a long reading.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, appreciate some time to talk this this evening and congratulations to the new members of the city council or in your Gardner's case, reelected members of the city council. Sorry, Joey Andrews, State Representative, thirty eighth House District. We're just going around in the year right now, giving updates as we're coming up, you know, year end and kind of summing up what's what's happened this year and also reminding each of the communities that next year is another budget cycle. So any, any projects that the city is looking at right now, any, anything that you'd like us to consider, send it our way sooner than later. We're keeping a list so that we've got something to work from as the budget process opens up early next year. We were fairly successful this last year in getting a lot of investments into the district, notably the hundred and fifty million dollars for the Palisades plant towards reopening that. So but also trail money up here in the greater Sagatuck area, several other investments. So looking forward to some more big wins next year and we we found that the earlier we got them in, the easier it was to to get them across the finish line. So but as for the end of year, obviously, we've had a very busy, productive year since the beginning of the year. Early wins like repealing right to work, reinstating prevailing wage, expanding the earned income tax credit, peeling the pension tax, repealing the abortion ban and expanding the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act among those early wins. And then this fall, passing the Michigan My Healthy Climate Plan, which is going to make Michigan probably one of the top five states is what we're estimating in the country for making the transition to a hundred percent clean energy, something that we're very, very excited about the prospect of. We also passed the Reproductive Health Act codifying more abortion protections, removing a lot more of those anti healthcare pieces that have been kind of left over in the law. Several other, I think, developments working through the House right now. I've been working on a package for sales and use tax exemptions for hyperscale data centers. Something that I think we here in Southwest Michigan have a lot of opportunity to capture, given our proximity to a lot of stable energy with, you know, our nuclear plants, et cetera. We passed that out of the House before year's end. Senate should be taking it up early next year and we anticipate smooth sailing to the governor's desk with that piece. We've also been working hard on a short term rental package. We hoped we'd get in before the end of the year, but just wasn't quite where we wanted it to be. I think early January, we've got some meetings with the municipal league and the Townships Association, talking with the realtors. You know, we've got a big roundtable built and I think just a little bit more work over the holidays, but we're anticipating getting that in and ready to roll in front of committee in in January, hopefully. So it's, as I said, it's been a very productive year. There's a lot of things that I didn't mention. Don't want to give an exhaustive laundry list, but we're really excited for next year. It's going to be a lot more to accomplish, obviously, heading into an election year, but I think a lot more on the table for us to get done. And to the new members of the council and the others here, always happy to grab coffee and chat sometime. I know I've met with most of the the sitting members at least a couple of times, but would love to get to know our new members as well and always open to more chats with with you guys who are already sitting. It's always a pleasure to come up to Sagatuck. The the lights were beautiful driving into town today. You guys were really ahead of the curve for most of the other towns and districts. Really felt like I was driving into Christmas right here. So always happy to come up and and join you guys. So thank you so much for giving me a little bit of time to speak and yeah, appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Please come by anytime. Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Anyone in the room? All right, Jamie, I'd like to open it up to anyone online who would like to make public comment. This can be on non agenda items, anything you'd like to talk about. No hands raised. All right, so let's see. We're on to correspondence. There is something on page sixty five. As you saw there, we do have an opening on the planning commission that I hope to get out there. Please send it out to your people. We need another member on the planning commission, so please send it out to whoever you think would be great for that board. It's an important one. Not that they're not all important, but that's, it's a big one right now. And then on to council comments. Logan, can we start with you? Any council comments? I know I shouldn't have started with the new, I'm sorry. Your chance just to talk about anything that you would like to make mention quickly.
Excited to be here. This is really nice and I think we got some neat things done tonight. It was a really great reading through the the packet and familiarizing myself with these issues. And it's cool to see it happen. It's cool to see it in action.
All right, Logan, thank you. Gregory?
Yeah, it was a great first meeting for y'all. We got some great things done today. Everybody got something. And this is, this is why I enjoy serving on council. So this was a great meeting. Also, I wanted to remind everybody, the Lake Shore Community Concert will be at the Sagatuck Center for the Arts Friday night, or sorry, Saturday night at seven PM and then Sunday at four PM. Tickets are still available. You can go to SAG or go to SC, the number four A dot org for that. If you'd like to get tickets, it's going to be a great concert and I'm going. Also, yours truly will be in the thirty seventh year production of Christmas Carol, where Scrooge has been busy putting the set together over at the Women's Club this morning. And our debut show will be on December eighth at eight PM. We'll have two shows on, or two shows on Saturday, a matinee at one PM and then an eight o'clock show. And then on Sunday, we'll have a seven PM show. We'll repeat that process the following weekend. So come and learn the Christmas, the Christmas miracle of Scrooge.
Thank you, Gregory. Scott?
I'm really pleased that Representative Andrews noticed the lights. It's credit to the staff. Superintendent Herbert's here. His team do a great job with the lights. A lot of volunteers do a great job with the lights in town and I'm just really thrilled. The town looks great as we head into the holiday season and and come Saturday, y'all haven't seen nothing yet.
All right.
All right, Helen?
Yeah, I did want to echo that. I pulled into town. I was a little bit early, so I actually got to drive all the way through and the lights look incredible. I just, I there's just every now and then I'm just reminded of how lucky I am to be here. And today was one of those days and it was really, it's, it's, it's a, it's a just such a wonderful feature of Sagatuck. Want to remind everybody to come during the parade and the ugly sweater pub crawl.
Oh, yeah.
That I'm volunteering for right after. So that's on Saturday. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Okay, Russ?
Yeah, and speaking of the parade on Saturday, I'm assuming the shovel brigade will be doing its normal misbehavior. It's very disorganized, but guys tend to show up in weird outfits and with shovels and we do something. So I'm assuming that Councilman Dean will be there as he has in years past. So looking forward to that. Just welcome again to Logan White and Holly Anderson to council. I'm looking forward to serving with you. I was encouraged by the attendance tonight. There's quite a few people online and then a number of people in the room too. So I always love to see people here. It's always good for them to to be participating in our process. For the twelve twenty city strategic meeting, I did mention during the comments earlier, I'm going to reinforce these comments is that I think the city council should have some discussion about the agenda for that meeting prior to the actual meeting itself. I think that we can do better. I think we can do more focus on the survey, which I'm assuming is going to be part of that process again. That hasn't been, at least knowing they've been discussed yet. But I'm really, really want to be focused on the council as a body, beginning to think about strategic objectives. And one of them is go green, not green, capital green for our amazing blue friend across the way there, but you know, one of the strategic objectives of our of our city should be sustainability. And one of those is, you know, like I've, I've chosen to not get a packet for the past, what, year and a half or something like that? That's my small opportunity to not produce paper. I've noticed that Councilmember White has done the same thing. So or at least will be doing so in the future. And that's, that's just one example where I think the council can maybe set some leadership for the community in terms of how we're acting to be better at what we do. So I would like to suggest that we really focus at this next meeting on defining what our strategic objectives are as a community and as a council. I really think that's important and I would ask that we have a discussion about what that agenda is going to look like prior to the twentieth.
All right, Holly?
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for letting me attend via Zoom. I really appreciate it. It's been, I was crushed this morning when my test script had two stripes on it, thinking I would have to miss the meeting. So I'm really glad to be here. Wanted to thank Jamie for administering my oath of office and her daughter for taking pictures. It was a, you know, a goosebump moment in my life. I wish my father were alive to see it. He was a city council person in Boise, Idaho way back. So I know he would be proud. And then finally, want to thank Russ for all the work he's done on planning. He's been a very effective planning commissioner. So it's big, big shoes to fill there. And I'm excited to welcome somebody new on planning and really appreciate being able to continue to serve in that. And the city is gorgeous. So thanks to Scott and everybody who who makes it happen.
Thank you, Holly. And then I just wanted to say that I, Helen and I had an opportunity to meet with a group of parents, mostly parents, interested in having a school resource officer in our school district. It was just an informational meeting on some ideas that they have. And Kelly Roche and a number of moms in the area were there, not to mention the fire chief was there. And there's more discussions that will be had about all of this. So I look forward to when they present to the school board and more meetings that will happen with that. If you're interested in it, Helen and I would be happy to fill you in on some of their ideas. And Kelly Roche, I'm sure would love to hear from any one of you if you want to pick her brain on some of those things. But with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
If Ryan's still there, I wanted to thank Ryan and our clerk for having our having our agenda so early for this meeting. It was before the Thanksgiving holiday. And it really gave me a lot of time to read through it, look through it, as busy as I am.